Thank you. Good evening. We'll call a meeting to order at 7:01. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where's the flag?
Right behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Before we take our seats, if we could just have a moment of silence for the sudden and unexpected passing of Ms. Antonia Boyano. Thank you. Okay, this being the first meeting of the year, the first action taken by the committee is election of officers. So the first agenda item is discussion, action of election of school committee officers. So at this point, I would take a motion, I will look for a nomination for the position of Chair.
I nominate Mr. David Testa for Chair.
You have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
I nominate Mr. Sean Gallagher for Chair.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are there any other nominees for the position of Chair? Okay, hearing none. We'll call the roll in the order in which they came, and we'll take it as a roll call vote. Okay, so for the vote for Mr. Testa for Chair, Ms. Backus.
Aye.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Nay.
Ms. Kirby Chapman?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Testa, yes. Name fails, 3-2. Okay, next, for Mr. Gallagher for Chair, Ms. Backus.
Present.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Testa, no. Name carries? 3-1, right? You were just present, yeah, 3-1. Okay. At this point, Mr. Gallagher, you want to chair, I move the official gavel to you. You will nominate the rest of the officers, and once they are fixed, if it's okay, we'll just do a little musical cheers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. At this time, I'll be looking for a nomination for Vice Chair.
I nominate Dave Testa.
Respectfully, I withdraw my name from that nomination.
At this time, are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Do you have Hazelwood?
Mr. Second?
I would second.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Backus?
Aye.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Aye.
Ms. Kirby Chapman?
Aye.
I will vote aye. Mr. Testa?
Aye.
Vote carries, 5-0. Next, we have the vote for Clerk. Are there any nominations for Clerk?
I nominate Michelle Kirby Chapman for Clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Testa. Are there any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Backus?
Aye.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Aye.
Ms. Kirby Chapman?
Aye.
I will vote aye. Mr. Testa?
Aye.
Congratulations.
I want to sit here. Just to be next to the Chair in case he needs everything, and then David comes down here.
Is it okay? I can just sit here, it doesn't matter.
You can sit there. All right.
Yeah, I mean...
I'll do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you, though.
Next matter of business, employee recognitions. Ms. Ruggieri.
There we are. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. Happy New Year to you all. Tonight, we're going to start off again with our employee recognition program. For those who may be listening for the first time, this is a peer-nominated recognition for people who have gone above and beyond to make a difference in the lives of their students and colleagues. This is one of the best parts of the job, and we are thankful for everyone who participates. So we have many people to recognize, and if you're here, I ask you to please stand so we can publicly recognize you as well. So first, for the clerical category, we have Kalen Polly in the NISS department. Special educator, Jenna LaBush at Holloman Elementary School. Kristi Patton, Assistant Principal at Veterans Middle School. Megan Francis, a one-on-one TA at Winman Middle School. Kim Hornby, school nurse teacher at Lippett Elementary School. Kristen Skodras, grade three teacher at Norwood Elementary School. Michael Dean, custodian at Winman Middle School. And Kim Taylor, Building A at Oakland Beach Elementary School. We thank everyone and really appreciate all their hard work. The nominations seem to be dropping off a bit, so I would encourage people to continue to nominate your coworkers. The form will go out tomorrow to do it, and we'll see you again next month in February. Congratulations to all the winners.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggieri. Congratulations to everyone. Next, we have Ms. Cusino to recognize the 2023 Rhode Island STEAM Educator Award winner, Kristin Noonan, Visual Arts Teacher, Robertson Elementary.
Good evening, and congratulations to our new Chair and everyone here. Happy January. I thought I'd do this officially, and I'd like to congratulate Ms. Kristin Noonan on her award. She is recognized as the Ride STEAM Educator of the Year. Kristin comes to us as the art teacher at Robertson School, and I'd like to invite her and Principal, excuse me, Principal Brian Dillon down to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to celebrate Kristin Noonan again today for our school committee and Mrs. Danbrook. We really appreciate the opportunity to publicly recognize Kristin. She does a phenomenal job for us at Robertson and also Park School as well. She does after-school programs that are flooded with students consistently. We'll say, sure, Brian, I'll take four more kids, even though it's like 34 or whatever, or another classroom. And she just does an unbelievable job every day for us. Single-handedly won us an $85,000 grant to rework our art room into an innovative space. And I could go on and on and on and on, but I was told to be short and sweet tonight. At least, my speech should be short and sweet, right? So I just thank you for taking the time to recognize Kristin, and Kristin, thank you so much for everything you do for our students, our staff, our school community. You truly are a leader among your peers and deserve this recognition so much. So thank you very much.
We're now at the point of public comment. At this time, there is a limit of one comment per person. Individual comments are respectfully requested to be limited to two minutes. Public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes in total, but the Chair, at his discretion, may extend such time in limited circumstances. The Chair may also suspend public comment if he deems necessary. Comments shall not contain inappropriate or salacious remarks. Again, this is public comment pertinent to agenda items only, and taking a page out of Mr. Testa's book, I did like his 30-second thing. I'm going to use his because it's bright and it's yellow, but while everybody's lining up for public comment, I do have to give some recognition to Mrs. Gallagher at home. She drew one out for me because I thought it was a good idea, so... Please just state your name for the record.
Hello, Darlene Netco, lifelong resident of Warwick, homeowner, taxpayer, graduate of Warwick Public Schools. I've been teaching English for 36 years, 34 of which have been in Warwick, and I'm president of the Warwick Teachers Union. First, Happy New Year to everyone, and congratulations to the new school committee officers, but really, all five of you are necessary to run the committee. And as always, I'm always willing to work with any member of the school committee. The union's door is always open to discuss, resolve, any issues that may arise. So please don't hesitate to contact me. I want to congratulate Kristin Noonan also on that prestigious award, yet another example of one of the many outstanding educators that we have here in Warwick. And she's a great art teacher and also a great teacher in general. The agenda item I want to start with is the Learn 365 that Superintendent Danbrook is going to be speaking about. I think it's great that Warwick Public Schools was able to work with the Boys and Girls Club in order to offer these special opportunities for students who need more work with math and reading and literacy skills. So any negative comments I have have nothing to do with Warwick Public Schools, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Warwick or Warwick in any way. I do take issue with the way the whole program that Governor McKee created is run. Because he has $81 million and just decided to throw it out willy-nilly to cities and towns who sign on and promise certain things. Instead of going to the school departments themselves, he should have gone to each school department in the state and said, "What do you need in order to accomplish this goal of providing year-round education for those students who need it?" Not, "Oh, if you sign up and do what I say and do this or that, or jump through this and that, whoop, I'll throw some money at you." Because we've got cities and towns in this state, the money's going to a library to run some adult education. And there's nothing wrong with adult education, but we want to concentrate on our K-12 education. Last year, I don't know who knows this, but last February, he was actually throwing out money for SAT prep. I think maybe only one school in the state knew about it. I didn't know about this program until April, and I don't think anyone else in Warwick knew that they were giving money in February for SAT prep. And that's not right. So I congratulate Superintendent Danbrook for being able to pull something together out of chaos from the state. And it's another example of, you know, Warwick Schools trying to do the right thing for its students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Netco. Are there any other individuals for public comment, agenda items only? Any other individuals for public comment, agenda items only? Seeing none. Moving on to routine matters, looking for a motion of approval of minutes of public session, December 12, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of transfers, January 9, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of warrants, January 9, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Ruggieri, for announcements, personnel as presented.
Hello again. We have one retirement tonight. We bid farewell to Mr. Al Goze, tech ed teacher and department head at Pilgrim. He has served us for 28 years with five additional years in state, a total of 33 years of service to students, so I will need a vote on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a few resignations that will also require a vote. Emily Lawrence, math teacher at Veterans Middle School. Hannah Malor, special ed teacher assistant one-on-one at Winman Middle School. Jonathan Smith, social worker, Norwood Elementary School and Wyman Elementary School. And Frank Scialzo, grants accountant and administration.
Thank you. Move approved by Mr. Testa. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, our courtesy announcements for appointments. We welcome Richard Brown as a social studies teacher at Tollgate High School. Michael Churchill, special ed teacher assistant one-on-one at Oakland Beach. Sadie Johnson, teacher assistant SES program at Winman. Christopher Lepardo, BIT TA with administration. Daphne Owens, teacher assistant one-on-one at Tollgate. Rebecca Moran, teacher assistant one-on-one at Lippett. Melissa Pellegrino, teacher assistant kindergarten at Sherman. Tammy Lewis, senior clerk in the maintenance department. And Katie Major, night custodian at Pilgrim. We welcome everyone to the district, and we wish you well, and our door is always open for anything you may need. And also, coaches, as presented in your executive packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggieri, and welcome to the district to all those that were hired. Onto donations and correspondence. Ms. Cusino, Ocean State Joblot, Wyoming, Rhode Island, $100 gift card to Warwick Public Schools for anti-bullying event.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I want to reach out to Ocean State Joblot, especially the Wyoming branch, and my friend Dave, who donated a $100 donation. Myself and five elementary principals are putting together an anti-bullying task force, and we are going to be having a couple of upcoming events. And so this will help defer some of the cost. We figure if we feed them, they will come, so we'll be having some snacks, and so he donated that. There's also going to be a great activity with toothpaste, so stay tuned for that, but thank you to Joblot for that. I can also speak on the second one as well to Wyman Elementary School, was an anonymous donation in the amount of $500. And I've spoken to Principal Raffinelli, who gives his appreciation, and they are going to be working with their school improvement team to come up with exactly what they would like to spend the donation on. But they're very excited about this, and they'll be reporting out what they purchase.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cusino, and thank you to Ocean State Joblot, your friend Dave, and the very generous donor who gave $500 to the students of ET Wyman Elementary School. Moving on to adoption of policies, Dr. Cecil.
Dr. Cecil is out this evening. I will be taking over. So for second read, we have ACC, physical or mental abuse and sexual abuse, sexual misconduct, and sexual molestation prevention policy. Also, the accomplishment reporting to the public, policy AG, which goes with that.
If there's no objection, excuse me one second, Ms. Backus, if there's no objection from any members up here, given that a majority of these have already gone through first read, and on to second read at this time, we would take it just all at one and allow Ms. Backus to present them and then possibly address any questions. So any objections?
No.
Hearing none. Sorry, Ms. Backus, go ahead.
Thank you. The next second read is policy DBA, budgeting system, second read. I missed AG, accomplishment reporting to the public, second read. DBD, budget planning, second read. DBH, budget adoption, second read. And DFD, rental and service charges, second read.
Move approval of all policies as presented by Ms. Backus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Backus, will you also be taking the policies that are before us for first read as well?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
For first read, AFG, use of independent evaluators. Do you want to take this in the same way?
If there are no objections from any members of the committee, we could take it all as one for the first reads as well, unless there's a particular policy that you want to pull out of the first read. Any objections to that? No objections? Go ahead.
DFC, grants from private sources, first read. GBA, equal employment opportunity, first read. GBB, staff involvement in decision-making, first read. GBN, disqualification of job applicants with criminal convictions, first read. IKD, honor rolls, first read. JC, school attendance areas, first read. JEC, student withdrawal from school, first read. And JHCE, health, nutrition, physical activity, and wellness, first read. These are all up on the website if anybody wants to refer to them.
Move approval of first read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Backus. Mr. Testa?
I have a couple of questions on some of the policies. Because of first read, things can be changed, right?
Pardon? Yes.
Yeah, so on GBN, and this may be more of a question for Mr. Hennius. It does prohibit anyone convicted of a misdemeanor or a felony from employment. And felonies, I get. There are some misdemeanors, though, that you could attribute to being stupid when you're young. So, you know, shoplifting is a misdemeanor. So if somebody did something dumb at 19, turned themselves around, went to college, got a degree, and applied to be a teacher here, and that's still on their record, are they prohibited?
I'm pulling up the policy right now, Mr. Testa, so let me take a quick look.
My concern is if the bar on misdemeanors is just too high, and the flip side of that would be, I don't know how you would distill it down. Because it's got to be at someone's discretion if, again, if somebody, you know, petty theft is a misdemeanor.
Mr. Testa?
Yes, Ms. Backus.
Just during the policy meeting, we discussed that, and some of us were for it, some of us were not for it. So it's something that is up in the air for even the policy committee.
Okay, that's fine. And the other, it's just something that I thought about. Again, I understand felonies, that's a different kettle of fish.
Do you want to send it back?
Well, it's only a first read, right? So, yeah, if, just discussed it again, and I don't know if there's room to make a little clarification on what a misdemeanor, a prohibiting misdemeanor could be.
So, Mr. Testa, I am looking at it, and the way the policy is written is the individual, if denied, would have the opportunity to appeal the denial to the school committee. So my expectation, as written, is if it was, as you posed, that maybe a misdemeanor from, you know, age 18, 19, something like that, they would come to the committee, explain the circumstances, and then it would be up to the committee.
So, Mr. Testa, do you have a requested amendment on this particular policy to go back to policy sub?
No, I have one other question, though. In paragraph three, it says all substitute or temporary staff members shall obtain a national state BCI. Once there is a break, a new national BCI is needed, and any new state BCI must be obtained in each subsequent year. So I guess this is for Ms. Ruggieri. The burden's on the employee, right? And will the district have any sort of a reminder to say, "Hey, Mr. Smith, your BCI is up"? Do we have anything, or could we put anything in place that would trigger a reminder? I don't know.
So currently, for people who are not permanent employees, there is a reminder in place by our employment clerk to send out to our substitutes. If this policy were to go forward, we would develop practices and protocols going forward to ensure the district was covered.
Thank you. That's the only question I had on that policy. I do have a question on JC, which is school attendance areas. It looks like we struck the language on redistricting every 10 years. But the way I read it, there's no language for redistricting at all. So, Mr. Hennius, do we need to have that in the policy, or is that just something the district can decide to do? I don't know if we need to have it in policy.
Yeah, I mean, the policy doesn't prohibit redistricting, so my expectation would be, as written, if the school committee or the superintendent decides to recommend redistricting, the school committee would be able to visit that.
Good, thank you. And I, one last question on policy, JHCE, the health and wellness policy, and it's in section E, where it says the Health, Nutrition, Physical Activity and Wellness Subcommittee will be chaired, co-chaired by the superintendent or designated and a member of the school committee. Is it just one member of the school committee, or could there be two? Or is that by, does statute require just one? Because most, most subcommittees have two.
Excuse me?
I believe that's from the statute. I could double-check that, Mr. Testa, but I believe that the statute requires that.
Okay, if it's required by the statute, that's fine. It's just something that I pointed out, that I noticed, I should say.
In the past, including now, that's always had two school committee members?
Right, so I just don't know if we could put two members on there. Okay, that's, so yeah, I would like to see policy sub, just revisit that.
I would think that as long as there's no quorum.
Right.
Two members on that.
Right, but I just, so if we're going to put it in policy, that's just one, but we're going to put two, I don't want us to be open to someone saying, "Well, your policy says one, but you've got two." Looks like a minor language change there. That's everything I had for those. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? I have one for the... I have one for the JEC, student withdrawal from school, first read. We were contacted, all of us, by a constituent individual that is working with, as one of the two nonprofit homeschool groups in the state. They indicated that there is some language within that policy that is up for interpretation. They recommended a few changes, which I would pass on to the chair of the policy subcommittee. They are simply stating that we should add the word awaiting for the sentences of those who are awaiting or have received approval to homeschool their student, rather than leaving it up to interpretation whether or not the child must remain in school until all paperwork is processed. So, Ms. Hazelwood, you have something?
Dr. Cecil contacted me, and she has updated the policy to reflect what the needs of the group were. So that's a good thing.
Great. Ms. Backus?
Ms. Hazelwood is correct. It sometimes is not feasible for a child or student to remain in school, and of course, we understand that, and therefore, that's been taken out.
Great. I'm glad that those edits were made. Anyone else? All those in favor of passing these as a first read with the suggested edits?
Aye.
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 Great. And now, policies for elimination, again, unless there is any debate on this stage. Is there any opposition to us taking the policies for elimination as one packet? Seeing none, motion to adopt?
Second.
Looking for an initial motion.
Motion.
Second.
Passes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And last, but not least, the reviewed policies.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now on to new business, discussion, presentation. Learn 365 Grant, Vacation Club at Boys and Girls Club in Norwood. Ms. Cusino?
It is a presentation, so yep, you gotta come on down for just a few minutes. Thank you. So, good evening, everybody, and on behalf of the Learn 365 Grant, and thank you to Ms. Nocheck for mentioning it earlier. This is a great collaboration between the Warwick Public Schools and the Norwood Boys and Girls Club. I'll go into a little bit of detail throughout the slides. Partnership with the governor's office, RIDE has been engaged with city and town leaders statewide to strategize and advance the priorities of Learn 365. We know that the school year is 180 days, but wouldn't it be great if our kids did a little more than that? The Warwick Public Schools, again, has partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, and this is the Norwood location for two learning opportunities for our students. The first opportunity was born in November, where we worked on a tutoring protocol. At two times a week, from November to June, we are working with four different schools that attend the Norwood Club, so it would be Norwood, Wyman, Hoxsey, and Holloman. We have two of our certified elementary school teachers. They are actually resource teachers over at Lipit, so shout out to them. And they work right now with four students each, so we started with just eight students, although there are about 50 students, 52 students to be exact right now. We are using their iReady BOY, beginning-of-year data, to look at their needs. And we are doing four primary students, so that'd be K through 2, and four intermediate students, so that'd be grades 3, 4, and 5. We will be comparing their EOI, which is their end-of-year data. Right now, we are smack in the middle of the year. Yep, we are doing MOI right now. So we're going to be looking at how they started the school year, where they are right now, and where they end their year, and hopefully, we'll see some great improvement. A letter of intent went home to the families to let them know that their students would be working with teachers at the club, and a shout out again to those teachers. And we also have a substitute on hold, just in case one of those gals can't make it to their committed days. Dawn helps us out as well. So that is the first leg or prong of this program that we put into place, so that is the tutoring piece. Part two is the vacation club piece, and we will be doing this three times this year. We just completed the first prong in December. We'll do it again in February. We'll do it again in April over the school vacations. We have three classrooms set up, and Superintendent Danbrook and I took a drive over, over the Christmas break, to the Norwood Boys and Girls Club to actually participate and see what was going on. There's a K-1 room, a 2-3 room, and a 4-5 room, anywhere from 8 to 20 students. There are two to three certified teachers in each of the classrooms, along with some of the Boys and Girls Club staff, so there are assistants in the room as well. And they are working on ELA and math. Shout out to the eight teachers who were there this vacation. They did some great units this year in some project-based learning over the break, and they were doing some things about snow and hot chocolate and the holidays. And it was just a really fun place to be for the couple of hours that we were there. And Leah Hazelwood came with us as well, so it was nice to have her along. So here is some of the activities going on in the second and third grade classroom. So you can see a lot of snow-themed things. This activity had to do with a boat, and a bridge, and a snowman, and all kinds of arts. In the kindergarten and first grade classroom, they were doing some storytime, and they were reading about gingerbread people. And again, they were going to be following up with some activities around that topic. And then in the grade 4 and 5 classroom, they were working, again, on some writing, but again, it had to do with hot chocolate and all kinds of interesting things for that age group. Because it is a grant-funded program, we have to have some data. So thank you to not only the teachers, but to the families and the students that filled out our surveys. So we had 10 of the 13 schools represented. Over the holiday, even though it was only four schools for the tutoring program, there were 10 schools represented of the 13 elementary schools over the Christmas break or holiday break. We had 32 students in grades 3, 4, and 5 fill out electronic, and thank you to Bobby for helping us with that. And then the little ones got to fill out a paper survey, so thanks to the teachers for sending those over. And then the teachers and some of the parents, so we had about 13 responses from the adults. So question number one, was this program well organized? And the kids thought yes, 75%, and the adults thought 100%. The second question was, did you have any help in reading and math? Kids felt 78%, and the adults felt 92%. Were you supported by the staff, either the Warwick School teachers or the staff at the Boys and Girls Club? 97 and 100%, so that says a lot. Shout out to everybody. Were there any problems that were addressed? This one could be taken two different ways, so I think it was in the interpretation. I think the kids thought there weren't any problems. So a couple of the answers were no, because there weren't any problems, but it's nice to see that if there were, things were taken care of, 72 and 77%. I really like this program, 84% and 100%. And would you like the program to continue over the summer if we were to get more funding? The kids were at 75, and the teachers were at 85, and the parents at 85%. So thank you to those folks that filled the survey out. That certainly helps us. And we'll do this again in January, I'm sorry, February, and again in April. Here's just some captures, some captions from some actual comments. So starting up on the right, on the left-hand side at the top, "We are thankful and grateful for such a great program, and our son loves going, and we love all of the staff that makes it much enjoyable for the kids. Looking forward to February Vacation School, as they call it. My kids enjoy going to the program, and they have an awesome staff." And I think this is a teacher comment. "I think we worked well as a team, and we made the activities educational and fun. Kids seem to enjoy us as educators and their time doing project-based activities." So thank you for those. I got tons of pictures and tons of quotes, so I just tried to capture a snapshot. This is one of my favorites, so I had to put it in there. We had a great experience, and by the end, the kids really seemed to enjoy their time with us. And I will do a quick explanation. The picture, probably a kindergarten or first grader. At the bottom is their writing on day one. Now remember, this was a three-day program, two hours a day. So they came and they wrote, "Come to candy cocoa, please." And by the end of the three days, with the teachers scribing for them, they were working on how to embellish their writing, and I know it's kind of small, so I'll read it for you. It says, "Hmm, what's that I smell? I think it's delicious hot cocoa. To begin with, gather your supplies. Next, heat your liquid. After that, stir in hot cocoa mix and pour into a cup. Then add toppings, drink and enjoy. Now you have tasted the best hot cocoa ever." And man, if we can do that in three days, imagine what we can do in 180 days. So special shout out to our Boys and Girls Club partners, Ms. Lara, Monique, Karen, Joanne, Bobby, and anybody else I forgot. And I have put in a little art, I have put all the names of all of our teachers who are helping out with our tutoring and with our vacation club. We couldn't do it without all of you. And of course, shout out to Dr. Cecil, who couldn't be here tonight, because she helps kind of drive this. So I appreciate all of her love and support with this as well. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cusino. Any discussion?
I love that.
Ms. Chapman?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I love this happening at Norwood. Norwood is great. Total shout out to Norwood. They're so great there. That's awesome. I just had a quick question about the kids. Is this like the other program, were these kids pre-selected, or were these kids that signed up for the camp?
Nope, these are just kids that signed up for the camp. They don't use the Oakland Beach location over the holiday breaks. They kind of pool them at that one Norwood location. So that's why you saw 10 schools represented during the school year. They have the OB location and the Norwood location, so that's why the tutoring only focuses on the four schools. But the vacation club was all 50-something kids that, whoever was there. We actually even had a sixth grader who was in the 4-5 class, who was more of an expert, let's say, and was kind of a little ambassador and helping the teachers out. So it was for everybody who was there.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Mr. Chair, if you may.
Mr. Testa?
Ms. Cusino, two questions. One, I think, for you, and maybe one for Superintendent. So it was just a sign up, right? Anybody who signed up came? Some districts kind of did it based on need.
So it's not based on need, it's whoever is in there.
Well, in other words, I'm going to take that back. Some districts went, they targeted the students that needed help, right?
So that's kind of what we're doing with the tutoring piece. That's where we're really looking at the data and focusing in on those students with the most splintered skills. But the vacation club is anybody in the club.
Okay. And then, I guess, Ms. Danbrook. I know the governor rolled the plan out, and he put money in, but if, for this thing to continue, is this to some point become a district-funded program? It does, right?
District-funded money, out of our operating budget.
Okay. And then, Mr. Bull, at some point, maybe we can put a price tag on that to see what that's going to cost us. Because, you know, it's all fine and dandy, but it's got to be paid for. And this is very typical of what the state will do to us.
And if I could, at this time, because it's grant-funded, the dollar amount that the teachers and tutors are receiving exceeds the contractual dollar amount that they would get under, let's say, the Extended Day Academy that we did last year, or anything that we would run for PD, like with Dr. Schultz and I. Because this is grant-funded, we'd be able to throw a few extra dollars in there. But if we were to put this into our general budget, we would come down to that contractual rate. So I asked for eight to 10 teachers. I had 30 applicants. So I don't know that the pool would be quite as large if we came down, although I did have a lot of people emailing me, and thank you and shout out to them, that really wanted the Extended Day Academy back this year. But this was the way the grant went this year. So we'll count on Mr. Heatherton here to find some grants for us like Dr. Cecil does, because, yeah, these are invaluable experiences for our students.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Just want to say it looked great to see the results of the program, the survey results. Great work by all those who brought this program to our school district. And a special thank you to the teachers that got involved, or even those who signed up and maybe weren't involved with the program, but they had the intention. So thank you very much to all those individuals.
And they'll be highlighted a little bit more in February, and then in April, we'll do a little bit more for them as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have discussion update, Superintendent update. Ms. Danbrook?
Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, members of the audience. First of all, I'd like to wish you all a very happy New Year. There are many exciting things that will be happening in the Warwick School Department, so I'm looking forward to that. The second thing I'd like to speak about is the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. So we have just received another installment of the grant for $314,000 from the Rhode Island Department of Ed to create a comprehensive literacy program for our secondary schools, which would help pay for professional development and materials. So this is the last year for the grant. I believe the grant was a four-year grant. Correct me, Dr. Schultz?
Four-year, yep.
So we're excited to get moving and do wonderful things with that money. Also, Learn 65 was on my list, but Director Cusino did an awesome job. I'd like to thank Director Cusino and Lara Dantwano, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, and the staff there, also all of our teachers. It was such a pleasure to visit and see the vacation club in action, and all the learning, the fun learning that was taking place. They really were enjoying themselves. Again, attendance is going to be coming up every month. So I want to congratulate the following schools, because they have the least number of chronically absent students in Warwick. Cedar Hill, Warwick Neck, and Greenwood. And I'm asking everyone to continue the great work you're doing in persuading and keeping on top of student attendance. Last year, our chronically absent student rate was 45%, and currently this year, we're at 32%. NIASC accreditation, the Warwick Area Career and Technical Center just completed a NIASC visit. The visit was very positive, and their accreditation has been continued. I would like to thank the staff at the Career and Tech Center for doing such a wonderful job with their programs and also hosting the visit. Thank you. Kindergarten registration, believe it or not, it's already that time again. So kindergarten registration starts January 16th, and all of the information can be found on our website. So if children have to be five years old as of September 1st, so if you have a child of that age, or if you have a neighbor or a friend, please spread the word. I appreciate it. And a couple of months ago, we came before the school committee asking for a partnership with Modern Teacher. So we have started that work. The first year of this work is just central administration is involved in it, just to get the ball rolling and planning, and then we're going to reach out to teachers and other school administrators. So I just began the work, really defining what modern learning environments should look like. We know technology plays a very important role in shaping how we live, work, and learn. We are working to create a learning environment that fosters creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and personalized learning experiences. This work is aligned to the district strategic plan. It's being guided by the district steering committee, and we are very excited to roll this out and involve all district stakeholders. So that is my update for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Danbrook. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion update, bond project status update. Mr. Gothberg.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, committee members, superintendent, community. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. If you don't mind, I'll do the bond update and slide into the high school right after that. Is that okay with the committee? All right, thank you. We'll start off with Winmen and what happened over winter vacation. As you know, we've been struggling with switchgear and transformers and trying to get the final power hooked up. We were able to do that over Christmas vacation, and we transferred power to the new switchgear, fired up the new generator. It's online now, and the last, the man doors were installed. Door access magnets were removed, and the new door hardware was installed with the automatic crash bars. They're in place and operating. There is one-door swipe at the rear of the A3 door that is not operating but will be operating. We had a problem with the Vercata system. There's parts ordered for that particular box, and as soon as that comes in, that will be up and running. The coiling overhead door at the loading dock and new loading dock surface should be completed by the end of next week. The indoor climate comfort issues in the admin and guidance areas were identified and addressed over the winter vacation, caused by a few of the 1970 original design issues. They were uncovered and made right, and we also added some electric heat baseboard to each office as backup, just in case. This week, the electricians will be identifying any remaining issues with the startup of the new switchgear and be addressing punch-list items as they move along. Cabinet heaters in the stairwell in the small areas will be started up now that they are powered. And then, final landscaping touch-up will be done once spring comes around, and we can take care of it then. Oakland Beach. E.W. Berman was the low bidder on the project and approved by the building committee. Demolition has started. The electricians are in there working. Submittals are being reviewed for a switchgear and all the important components. All is on track for the Oakland Beach community to return to their building in September at this point in time. Holloman, the Holloman project is due to go out to bid at the end of January, by the end of January. So we should be ready to go for that once Oakland Beach is out of Gorton. And the pond has been corrected in front of Holloman. High school project. Meetings with the architects, principals, and department leaders at each school are ongoing, and the teams are in the process of understanding the programs and needs for each school. This information is critical to lock down square footage needed at each school. Both design teams are doing a great job of adapting their designs to the school sites, identifying wasted square footage, and moving that square footage to program space or eliminating it to keep to the budget. An RFP for the district's bonus project manager has gone out for proposals. Proposals are due on 1/22 of this year. The building committee will then review and score each proposal, interview the top three finalists, negotiate a fee, and approve the winning proposal at the February building committee, and then bring it to this school committee for the final approval at the February meeting. First task for the OPM will be assist in assessing design for budget and write an RFP for the design-build contractor. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gothberg? Great. Thank you, Mr. Gothberg. Discussion update, FY 2024 Monthly Financial Report and Year-End Review. Mr. Bull.
Good evening, committee. I provided everyone with the January 2024 fiscal report, along with my notes. One thing I'd like to mention, as I did last month, the lunch fund balance increased this month $34,000. If there are any questions, feel free to forward them to myself or anyone within my office.
Any questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Testa.
Mr. Bull, thank you. I remember when the lunch balance was increasing $10,000 a month.
Yep.
Right? $34,000 a month.
Yep. So there is one other contributing factor to that. The applications for free and reduced lunch do lapse annually. So if you filled out an application last year and were approved, you do have to fill one out for this school year, and so those applications do lapse year over year. So in November, December, January, we do typically see the change in the lunch fund balance increase, because there are families that just didn't know that they had to reapply. So we do proactively reach out to those families to try to get them re-enrolled.
Okay. And one other question. Do we pursue cash discounts with our suppliers?
We do. So with a number of the vendors that we work with, like Staples, WB Mason, Amazon, School Specialty, we have the opportunity to apply for cash discounts. So if you pay within 10 days or 25 days, you might get a 1% or 1.5% discount on your orders. For, in terms of school supplies, I looked at the fiscal year '23 spend between those four vendors. It's about $700,000. But ideally, we could ship some of the expenditures that are contract-based or something like that to those vendors in order to purchase more through Amazon, which has a more generous cash rebate program.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because I know, department the size buys a lot of stuff. It's hard to get cash discounts on services, I get that.
Yep.
But, you know, where I come from, cash discounts are every day. So it was 1%, 2%. I don't know if we could negotiate some good cash discounts, but sometimes it butts up against the city's check-running schedule. So, you know, we could do everything on our end, but if the city can't get the payment out in time--
We typically, so with WB Mason, we've made sure to recoup those discounts as often as we could, which was, I would say, monthly. So as soon as the WB Mason invoice comes in, we sort of prioritize paying that invoice within the 10 days in order to get the full 1.5% back. The Amazon program is not necessarily, from my understanding, is not necessarily based on a monthly invoice total. It's an annual amount. So if, say, if you spend, and I'm just making these numbers up, but I think they're relatively accurate. So if you spend $400,000 in a year, you get 1% back. You spend $550 in a year, you get 2% back, and it goes up to 3%.
Okay. Yeah, that's just something, I mean, obviously, from where you come from, you get that too. So if we just keep looking for opportunities to pursue, that's just money, that's not free money, but it's money that we can--
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Testa. Anyone else? Mr. Bull, you had indicated lapsing in registration status for children that qualify for this lunch fund balance program.
Yep.
If we showed in the prior year that they qualified, and then the year thereafter they also qualify, are we able to go back and receive any credit, or is it a lost cause at that point?
I would have to double-check. I'm not actually sure on that. But I'll follow up with the Food Services Department tomorrow.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And as of today, our lunch fund balance is $211,164.53. Next, we have discussion, action, approval, new role, Assistant Controller, Grants and Bond Finance Manager, Mr. Bull.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cusino.
Ms. Beckis wanted to add something to that last--
Oh, excuse me. Ms. Beckis.
Thank you. Mr. Bull, is that for this year since September?
The 211?
211.
That's the total outstanding currently. So including whatever the balance was as of the end of the fiscal year last year.
Okay, so it's for multiple years?
That's total.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Beckis. Anything else? Mr. Bull, approval, new role, Assistant Controller, Grants and Bond Finance Manager.
So the department, I would say, in my first six months, I would say, one of the biggest weaknesses, I'll call it, within the finance department has been the back end of grants and the operations and applying for reimbursements, doing the financial reporting. Dr. Cecil and Mr. Hetherton do an excellent job of writing for grants and getting them, and then it's just sort of not organized on the back end in terms of the reporting that goes to ride federal agencies, local agencies, as well as the reimbursements that need to be applied for. Grants basically offset general fund dollars, dollar for dollar. So if we say we have $13 million in grant funds for a given year, and we only apply for and get reimbursement for 12, you just wasted $1 million of the district's money. So the point of this role is to help organize the fiscal side of the grants. One of the important things that I think needs to be brought up initially is the fact that when we apply for grants, a certain percentage or dollar value is assigned to what are called indirect costs. So when you write a budget for a grant, you have salaries, you have benefits, you have professional services that you're going to spend it on, but you also have what are called indirect costs. And those can be allocated to basically overhead. So if you have an accountant, like this role, who works on grants exclusively, you should be able to pull indirect costs from multiple grants in order to fund the role itself. So the one thing I would like to highlight is that this role should not pull from general fund dollars. So it wasn't budgeted, no, but the district should not be paying for it. The indirect costs associated with grants should be.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bull. Any comments for Mr. Bull on this? Actually, excuse me, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may--
Mr. Testa.
Mr. Bull, you did identify, we have 13 million in grants, and part of your intention for this position is to also have this person handle the bond--
Yes.
--bond payments and things like that. And I think people need to know that's necessary, because Mr. Gothberg and Jen French in his office are doing everything, and it's yeoman's work, and with the high school bond coming on, it's just going to be more work. But your office needs to check them, too.
Yep.
And I think that's part of what this position is, and we did discuss, it's possible, we'll have to investigate if some of the work that's done from this position could be reimbursed from the school bonds, too. I mean, that would be a right question. So to your point, that this shouldn't be an operational fund impact.
Agreed, agreed. The other portion of the work associated with the role is going to be on the bonds. So any shortfall, which I don't anticipate, in grant funding for, to pay for the role itself, should be covered by OPM funds.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Initially, for me, I did have reservations on this position, given that the building committee is in the process of also acquiring an Assistant Director of Capital and Construction Projects. And I saw similarities between the job descriptions. However, after speaking with Mr. Bull today, he gave pretty much the same explanation that we all heard here this evening. I feel much more confident in moving forward with this. And then, as Mr. Testa pointed out, you know, the finance office is also a checking balance on these subcommittees, so the building committee as well. So I support this position. So at this time, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, discussion, action, 2024 Rhode Island Student Survey. Ms. Danbrook.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. I'm here tonight to ask your approval of implementing the 2024 Rhode Island Student Survey. This survey is from the Rhode Island Department of Behavioral Healthcare Developmental Disabilities in Hospitals, and it's relating to adolescent substance abuse and misuse in middle and high schools. The results of the survey will be used to determine what resources would better support our adolescents in the community and across the state.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Danbrook. Looking for a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have something?
Ms. Beckis.
This survey is anonymous. It is used, and also you don't have to answer all of the questions if you're uncomfortable. This survey is used for things like hiring substance abuse counselors, student substance abuse counselors, and folks like that in the middle and high schools. It's actually very important financially for us to go forward with this. And like I say, it's not mandatory that anyone fills it out. It's anonymous. They take, they will take an incomplete survey if somebody doesn't feel comfortable answering a question or three. So it's important for Warwick, it's important for all districts in the state. It's also important for the state to have some idea of how serious the substance abuse and substance use is in the state by adolescents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Testa.
Ms. Beckis, you kind of said most of what I was going to say, but I think it's pretty simple here. The second paragraph says, "Your district was identified and selected due to services your students receive because of state or local strategic prevention framework partnership for success grants." So you take the money, you take the survey. It's pretty simple. But parents know that they can opt out. If, as a parent, if there are questions that you're uncomfortable with, then your child doesn't have to answer them. I think, frankly, personally, I think some of these questions for a sixth grader just don't make any sense to me, but, you know, I don't make the test. But the important thing is parents can opt out, and you can tell your kids if you don't understand the question, or don't answer it. It's pretty simple, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Testa. Anyone else?
Yeah. I understand that parents can opt out. I don't know if that all parents really know about it or really know about everything. I think parents probably should be given these before the young kids get it especially, especially if kids as young as 10 are going to be asked to answer questions about their sexuality, about abuse, alcohol abuse, drug abuse, guns, therefore, the little kids. I feel like parents should be informed. And then with the teenagers, I'm kind of wondering, because kids tend to answer how they want to be perceived, more than the actuality of what's really going on with their life. So I'm kind of wondering about the data. Those are my thoughts. More about, because there's been a lot of, parents have been crazy about these surveys, and this kind of like, is like the main focus of what most parents are concerned about. So a little bit.
But we've done this before, though.
You all set, Ms. Chapman?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. We've had protocols for notifying parents, right, Ms. Cusino?
We do. We have protocols in place. The 10-year-olds would be the fifth graders, and this is a secondary survey, so this wouldn't be for anybody--
I just went by what the survey said, it was a 10-plus.
Quite that young, yeah. It would be middle school, so it'd be grade 6 through 12. But there is a place where parents can opt out, and Mrs. Mari is very clear about that when she sends that out in her letters as well. I can only speak to elementary, but I'm sure Dr. Schultz and Superintendent Danbrook can embellish.
The only thing that I can think of with the age 10 is if somebody maybe skipped a grade, but typically you're 11 when you're in sixth grade. So it wouldn't be any of our current students in grade 5.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We also can share the survey by school to the parents of each school, so ahead they'll know the questions that will be asked.
Thank you.
Well, that's what I mean.
Mr. Testa, are you all set?
So I, Ms. Danbrook, I'm guessing, or Ms. Cusino, or someone, if, when we send the notification to the parents about what you can do, just put a link to the survey on it, so then they can see it. So it's one email to the parent, very concise, very clear, and they can--
I believe we've done that in the past, but we can certainly make sure that that's done for this one as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I don't know who I should direct this question to, but when are we planning to facilitate this survey?
So the timeline starts in January, and it goes, I believe, until May.
Okay. So I contacted earlier Tom Martin, the Director of Behavioral Healthcare Division with the Prevention Unit that is administering the survey, only because I had some questions on, what are the financial implications if we don't proceed with this? And he stated that there's no bearing on grant funding, though he did-- And he stated that there's no bearing on grant funding, though he did mention that districts which do participate obviously are prioritized higher if they do participate. I, I agree with everything that Ms. Backus has stated, as well as Mr. Tester, but given that in speaking with Tom Martin, Tom Martin with the Prevention Unit, he had indicated that we have the ability to complete this anytime between January and June. So I just feel that this is very rushed and I would like if we could just slow it down for a moment, get some additional information, maybe advertise this out to the parents within the school district. I'm not saying I'm opposed to the survey. As Mr. Tester had stated, if a parent is uncomfortable, if the children are uncomfortable with the question, they can opt out of those questions. I'm just saying we need to do a better job of advertising what's coming down the pipeline, the types of questions that are being asked, so that parents have that opportunity to have those discussions upfront with their children. Do you know, how, how is this going to be deployed or is it going out in the school newsletters? Are we putting it out via, you know, a separate email on that particular topic?
Yeah, so I will meet with Director, our Assistant Superintendent McCaffrey tomorrow and we'll come, we'll come up with a rollout plan, which we can present to you at the next school committee meeting.
That would be fantastic. At which time I think, you know, we would feel a little bit more comfortable with proceeding with this, so that way the parents understand it. Speaking as a parent myself, you know, just real, it, being involved with the school committee gives me that opportunity to kind of be focusing on this. But there are parents that aren't as involved or aware of what's going on. Again, support the survey, support the collection of information to support the needs of the children within the various districts of the states. So I, I don't want that to be manipulated by anyone that I don't support the collection of this data. I'm just saying the rollout and the deployment is something that I would like us to see sharp and so. Are you comfortable if we table this?
Yes, I'll bring a plan before you next month.
Great. Motion to table?
Mr. Chair, before we do that, I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, you may have spoke to, to Mr. Martin, but their own literature says January through May. So this isn't the first time we've done this survey either. I, I, I trust the administration to, to roll this out in a, in a, in a slow enough way for parents. This is, I'm trying to say, this is a new ground for us. So I'm not sure, but delaying it another month, I don't know. I just, to me, this should be pretty much a, a routine thing. Again, this is nothing new and I don't think that administration has any intention to roll it out in a way that they're going to rush it. I, I don't see it because they haven't before. So if you want to table it, if there's a motion, I guess we need a motion to table. Right now it's on the floor for a vote, right? It's been moved and seconded?
Well, before we take, you want to give the second for discussion on the motion? Yes. So we need a second on the motion to table and then we can have discussion on that. Then we would take a vote. If that fails, then we could pass the, the original motion. So is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kirby Chapman. Any discussion referred from Mr. Tester? Anyone else?
I think we can let the parents see it before we roll it out. There are, you think all the parents know this, they don't. They do not know. It's not horrible to ask if it's okay before we proceed. It's one month, we can get this done, but I would want the parents to have the opportunity to speak for their children before these, this survey goes out.
I feel as though we've been here with Panorama.
Ms. Hazelwood, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Ms. Kirby Chapman?
I feel like we've been here with Panorama before and I feel like this is literally like screaming what most of them, most of what the parents were concerned about and it's the same thing. I think it's like, hey, this is going to come down the pipeline, you're cool with it, it's cool, if not, opt out now.
All set, Ms. Kirby Chapman? Thank you. Mr. Tester?
Mr. Chair, may I? Thank you. Ms. Hazelwood, I don't think that, you know, I don't think that adminis, that administration, I think they just go through saying that they were going to let parents know. So a, a month is a month, I understand, but I, I would, I would just not want the public to think that administration was going to ram this through and not give parents an appropriate amount of time.
I trust this administration.
I, I do too.
Let me say that. Let me say that.
As do I. And, and so, you know, if, if we approved it tonight, I mean, I don't think they're going to send it out tomorrow. So I mean, obviously the motion is to table. I just, I just want to clarify that I don't think the administration, and when Panorama came, I think Panorama was somewhat controversial here and I think you guys did that. You guys called parents in who objected to it before it all went out. So I think, I think you've covered all those bases before and I think you would cover them again. So, you know, I see, I see the motion to table, I get it and we'll vote on it. I, I, I won't support the motion table because I don't think it's necessary to table it, that's all.
I think it's respectful of the parents in the district. From the constituents that I heard from, I think it's the respectful thing to do, seeing it's their children that will be taking the surveys. So I think it's fear to share it publicly and let them make a decision and then those who want to take it, we're clear and transparent and everything is out there. That's what I'd like to see.
And, and I think that's exactly.
Ms. Hazelwood, you good?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Tester?
I just think that's exactly what was proposed tonight, so, but that's fine.
I would just comment that similar to Ms. Hazelwood, having constituents reach out to you as they observe the agenda and they're, go through the documents and they were unaware of this, you know, that, that tells you that they're not aware of it. Ms. Superintendent, what would, what would the plan be for deployment? So let's say this motion fails here, the actions that you would then take would be what as a school district?
So we'd like to have each principal send out some information. This survey is not given every year, so you're correct that some people.
Yep.
Don't know it exists.
Yep.
So we'd like to do it at school level.
Great.
You know, because it means more when it's coming from a principal, it's more personal.
Absolutely.
The parents can call and question and comment with the, their individual principal. So a rollout would look like something like that.
Okay. And, and you had indicated that it's, as did the Director, had indicated that the process has already begun. So would this be like an email goes out this week?
Oh, no, no. I just need school committee approval.
Yep.
And then I'll be sitting with the Assistant Superintendent and we'll do, I'd like the rollout to be consistent across the district.
Yep.
So I'd like Mr. McCaffrey and I to, to plan the rollout, but it would be through the individual schools.
Okay, great. My fear, Mr. Tester, is not that we don't move forward with this survey. I don't, I don't want the public or anyone up here to misconstrue that. It's a matter of the deployment itself. I understand that, that the administration, as you stated, might not rush this. It sounds as though Ms. Danbrook is going to meet with Mr. McCaffrey. You know, there's no harm in them having that discussion right now, whether the, the matter gets tabled and brought back up on February the thirteenth at the next meeting. So they would have their plan in place already and then they could proceed. I see very little risk into tabling it for four weeks, given that there's no immediate direct financial ramifications and that even if we tabled it for four weeks, you could still complete the survey between the February and May, June, whosoever word, timeframe. So with that, any other discussion? Hearing none, a vote on the motion to table. All those in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. Next item, discussion action, Contract Award, TNL Engineering LLC. Mr. Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. Walky Recurrent Tech Center is looking for approval of REC 18308 to purchase the performance tire changer, tabletop design for eight thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. It's for the automotive program to keep up with industry-based standards and competencies. This will be purchased through Mohawk Lifts LLC, which is a sole source provider, at no cost to the district, at state categorical funding.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Looking for a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next item, discussion action, Contract Award, Beyond Services LLC. Ms. McGovern.
Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, in your packets you'll find information on transportation services. It's a small piece of our statewide transportation responsibilities. Looking at another vendor, Beyond Services, which will save us approximately eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the remainder of the school year, requesting your approval.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have one question for Mr. McCaffrey.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. McCaffrey, just educate me here. This is, what students is this?
These would be students that are homeless and displaced in another community where we have to share the cost with the other community.
Okay.
So you'll see we're paying fifty percent of the cost, but the fifty percent cost is reduced by a hundred two dollars and fifty cents a day.
Gotcha.
By going to another vendor.
Yep, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, discussion action, Contract Award, Turf Products Corp. Mr. McCaffrey.
In your packets you'll find information on SAM Pro Model sixty forty that we're looking to lease purchase over a five-year period. We're requesting your approval. We did have a demonstration by a vendor where numerous members of the staff of both the athletic department and maintenance department had the opportunity to test the unit, recommend to purchase the unit based upon the demonstration and the needs of the district for both the softball fields and the baseball fields. Request your approval.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for, a couple of questions for, I guess it's Mr. McCaffrey, Mr. Oliver, one or the other. One, I'll get to the, the quote. It says final pricing will be determined sixty days prior to delivery, which kind of sounds like a price prevailing at time shipment. So I'm assuming that if we approve this tonight, this is what we're paying right here, right, Mr. Bull? Okay, thank you. And then I guess it's Mr. Oliver. So for lack of a better word, training on how to use the, the piece of equipment, right?
That will be provided by the vendor.
Okay, and we're going to be clear on who operates this?
Yes, we're going to have one of my maintenance staff solely run that piece of.
Your, your folks, coaches aren't going to be driving around?
Nope, just, just my folks, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And we have the standard warranty, two years I think it is? Standard, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Backus.
Back in 2023, this was discussed at a school committee meeting. We were given a thirty-five thousand dollar cost and it has inflated to a fifty thousand dollar cost. I said back then that the city has at least two SAM Pros and that we should reach out and see if the city would share them with, or what the, the deal was. I don't know if that's been done, Mr. Oliver, anything?
Unfortunately, Ms. Backus, they have a ton of fields that they have to do and they only have two. I think they're down to one now. At this point, they have dozens of fields that they have to do through the course of a day for rec leagues and other organizations that use their, their fields. So I don't think it would be possible for us to borrow their equipment.
So if they're down to one, why couldn't we like maybe work with them and fix theirs? I just think it's, anytime we, we work together with the city to solve a problem like this, it's a win-win for both and we are one city.
I, I totally understand what you're saying, but the, the volume of fields that they have to do through the course of a day, our fields wouldn't have gotten done. I, I think that this is a vital piece of equipment right now that we have to have to make the job easier for my guys and, you know, have a, a better playing field for the children.
So, Mr. Bull, where is this money going to come from?
So we, because the budgeted. The, the amount that was included in the, the fiscal year twenty-four budget was twenty-eight thousand dollars. The, the model that was originally quoted was, was quoted at thirty-five thousand dollars and it had a two-year, I think it was eighteen to twenty-four month lead time, so we wouldn't actually have the equipment for almost two years because of supply chain issues and it was over budget. And so in order to fit the equipment into the budgeted amount, we decided to go with a lease agreement, which the, the equipment will be covered under warranty, we'll have to budget for the, the annual lease payments, which are about ten thousand dollars a year for the next four years after this year. And at the end of those four years, the district will own the equipment outright.
And what is the warranty on this?
I believe it's two years. It's, it should be included in the, the packet that's in there, but yeah, it's two years.
But is it two years from the start of the lease or two years after the five years?
I would have to, I'd have to double check from the, I'd have to look at the, the lease agreement.
I'm asking these questions for the public.
Yep. I, I can, I can, I can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
All set, Ms. Backus? Thank you, Mr. Bulls. One thing I want to point out, while this backfeed here. One thing I want to point out is your creativity with going with the lease to buy option. You know, the, the classic saying is lease items which depreciate, you know, purchase items which appreciate. So I think that was a very creative financial move on your part. Certainly when we voted on this matter last year to now, prices continue to rise, parts continue to go up, supply chain matters. Mr. Tester can tell you that most works in supply chain. They continue to drive pricing up daily. So obviously to get it to this point, you know, it's a moving target when having to purchase something like this. But one cost I would just like to point out that, that is missing from this invoice is, is the cost, correct me if I'm wrong, the cost avoidance would be the correct term of a significant workers' comp claim by having improper equipment. So I'm glad that these individuals are getting the equipment necessary to prevent serious musculoskeletal strains and sprains while also saving on the materials to maintain the, the fields that our kids are playing on and then also to improve the, the conditions of our property. So nicely done to you, to Mr. Oliver, Mr. Ricks and everyone else that was associated with this. Great job. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes, four to one. Next item, number eleven, discussion action, request for two additional special educators and four full-time teacher assistants. Ms. Barber.
Good evening. Tonight, special services requests approval for two special educators and four full-time teaching assistants. This proposal entails the expansion of two additional classrooms within our elementary-aged SES program. The SES program provides supportive social emotional services to students and this request addresses the sharp increase in social emotional support necessitating the expansion of our program to comply with student IEPs. This is a non-budgeted expense and happy to answer any questions.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Although, any discussion?
I just want to say something. Thank you so much for that detailed explanation of why the need is there. You described the children that perfectly fit those programs and thank you so much for that because when you give us all that information, it's so much easier to justify why these jobs and these positions are needed. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, and I would just echo Ms. Hazelwood's remarks. I appreciated you reaching out the other day and explaining why there's this increased need for special educators and TAs within the classroom. So made total sense. I'm very much in support of this. So at this time, if there's any other discussion, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. Barber, again, discussion action, Contract Award, Stephen A. Feldman, MD. Ms. Barber.
Move approval?
Oh, excuse me. Number twelve, discussion action, approval, LRP, National. Number 12, discussion action, approval, LRP National Institute Conference, May 2024. Ms. Barber.
Sure. Special services requests approval to attend the LRP's National Institute on Legal Issues of Educating Individuals with Disabilities this May. The National Institute has been a special education professional development leader for over 40 years, and this is a great opportunity for our special education administrators to learn from some of the nation's most renowned legal experts, and to work collaboratively with our special education practitioners. This is a grant-funded conference.
Looking for a motion to approve.
Move to, move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm in support of this conference, given that it's grant-funded, also that you're going to have the opportunity to go and collaborate with other people within this specific area of focus, and given our need as a district being in, in the tops for children that require special services. So with that said, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, Ms. Barber, here's 13 now. Discussion action, contract award, Stephen A. Feldman, MD.
Special services requests the approval of this memorandum to continue the services of our district physician, Dr. Stephen Feldman. The 23-24 school year rate remains the same at $35,000. This is a budgeted expense.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, discussion action, full-time, one-to-one teaching assistant request for Warwick Vets Middle School and Norwood Elementary School. Ms. Barber.
Special services requests approval for one full-time, one-on-one teaching assistant at Warwick Vets, and one, one-on-one teaching assistant at Norwood Elementary to support students with behavioral needs. The support was added to their IEPs. This is a non-budgeted expense.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
These are necessary positions.
Yes, they are.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 15, discussion action, renaming professional staff and support staff in the policy manual. Dr. Cecil, who will be taking that for her? Ms. Danberg.
I'll take it.
So, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Danberg, go ahead.
Move approval.
In the policy manual, we just want consistency with our terms. So at times, at times, we, we, we call them support staff, sometimes professional staff. So we would just like for consistency. So we'd like to rename the professional staff and the support staff in the policy manual so we're consistent with the terminologies that we use in other areas, in the contracts and everything.
Great, thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So basically, just a language matter, as Mr. Testa would say.
It's a language.
Ms. Backus.
It's a simple language change, because we talk about professional staff as certified, all professional staff as certified, and most of them, except for non-union folks. And support staff is local 94th classified staff, which, just so that there's no confusion.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, discussion action, contract award, change order request, Delta Mechanical, Mr. Oliver.
On this change order for Delta Mechanical to continue the HVAC repairs at Warwick Vets.
Looking for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
This, was this, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Testa.
Mr. Oliver, this is a continuation of the $50,000 that...
That's correct.
Right, and so, how, how done are we now in your estimation?
So as of Monday, they have removed the, the entire unit off the roof and replaced the unit on Monday also. Now they're in the process of connecting it and doing all their, their back with, with the, you know, the infrastructure. They have replaced compressors on other units in, on the roof, and they still have to continue to do some more compressors. I shared the detailed list of what units need work with, with the committee, so, you know, this is a necessary, necessary adjustment for the change order in order to move forward with this project.
We have to fix it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Backus.
Mr. Oliver, thank you, Mr. Oliver. This time, you're requesting $60,000. Will this be the end, and it will be fixed for the 60, or is this up in the air? We're not sure.
I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, I have no idea. We're at the, we're at this point in the, with this progress, with this project that we continually find things wrong, and obviously, it's a price tag with everything that we do.
And there's, there's nothing we can do with, well, there is no warranty.
Correct.
And insurance won't cover any of this?
I do not believe so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hazelwood.
I just want to thank Mr. Oliver. He's been working really hard on this, trying to get this together, and I appreciate that, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you very much for the compliment. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Item 17, discussion action, contract award, WW Granger Inc., Mr. Oliver.
Good evening, I'm requesting approval on this contract. These are for three combustion gas detectors for my HVAC team. They detect gas leaks in our, from our heating equipment and our kitchen equipment. I think it's a necessary tool that they need, each need to have on, on hand at any given time in an emergency situation. So I'm requesting your approval on this.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Mr. Oliver...
Ms. Backus.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, where will these be placed?
They will be carried on their person in their truck with them at all times in case of emergency. So if they need to respond to a call, they'll have them on their person at all times.
Thank you.
Mr. Testa.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, are these new devices for that staff, or have they always have them, had them, or just replacing them?
We, we've had them, the ones we, the one we have, we have one for the district, and it's always chasing whoever has it in their truck. At this point, it's necessity to have every one of them to have one in their truck.
Right, because we're putting more and more systems in that required. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And lastly, discussion action, contract award, Atlantic Abatement Corporation, Mr. Oliver.
Good evening, I'm requesting your approval for this abatement project at the maintenance building. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Did you get that, Teresa? You got Mr. Testa, and then Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Oliver, just to, just for the edification. This is abatement to the maintenance building because...
So what's happened, we have a female population that's moved into my building, and the female facilities do not meet the needs of the amount of females I have in my building, so we have to do some abatement work to do a rework of the plumbing in order to put a better adequate facility in for the female population.
And is part of that movement from Ms. Barber, right? That's part of the Rhode Island Academy?
No, no.
No, this is different? This is, okay, this is...
This is, this is my office, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, so this is, you need space.
Transportation moved into my building.
Gotcha.
And right now, we're going to have, we have seven female employees working out of my building with one stall for them to use, and it's not adequate for them, so that's why we're doing this work.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Mr. Oliver, how long did it take you to practice today? That politically correct way of presenting that.
Well, Mom taught me well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we're now going to move on to public comment. Again, this is public comment on any items you'd like to discuss. Going to stick to two minutes per person, again, using the 30-second mark. Going back to the original rules, comments shall not contain inappropriate or salacious remarks. The chair may also suspend public comment if he deems necessary. Public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes in total, but the chair at his discretion may extend such time in limited circumstances. Please just state your name for the record.
Hi, Darlene Netco. I see Modern Teacher was on the agenda again. I just think it's hilarious that we have something called Modern Teacher and no teachers are currently involved. I know there's a plan to involve teachers, but if it's something having to do with teaching, then teachers should probably be involved. And while we're talking about budgets and budgeted items, that time of year scheduling and budgeting coming up, when we're talking about programs and classes and courses that need to be scheduled, because that will be coming up. Remember, we should have PE for a full year in the high school again. We need guidance back in the elementary school. I had a lovely conversation with Mrs. Kuzanu the other day about the importance of guidance. We've got some programming going now in the elementary school that classroom teachers are supposed to do, and really, guidance counselors used to do that. It was in their curriculum. So let's think about the proper staffing for all of the programs and for the needs of the students. And, you know, I'm glad we have a special, the special services directors that bring forward for approval the addition, when additional staff is needed, because we do have a huge need for those two classrooms that are being added. Every day, students are qualifying for these programs, and we need to have the classrooms available for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Netco.
Jeremy Langel, I have a first grader at Warwick Neck, and you reminded me I have to register my incoming kindergartner, so I don't know how that happened. I pray for Mrs. Morissette every day. So I, I want to just say a couple of things really quickly. You know, I think the survey issue keeps coming up, and I, and I, and I think it just needs to be said out loud. I understand the idea that it, you know, doesn't matter if we do it in four weeks, but we can also do it now. So that's not an argument. That's just a, it's not an argument, right? It's a logical fallacy, actually. The, being a parent does not make one an expert in epidemiology, or substance abuse, or psychiatry, or any of those things. And I, and I know the impulse is to watch a YouTube video for an hour, and that suddenly makes someone an expert, but that's not how it works. I trust the institutions that we have in place to make these decisions. So there was no reason to delay the survey. I'm just going to say it. There was no reason to do it. The, the institution has already done the work, the experts have already done the work. Me being a parent doesn't make me an expert in it. The fact that I had children just means I had children. All right? So that just needs to be said. I also share Mr. Testa's concern about the language around misdemeanors. I would want to make sure that we don't exclude candidates who have, you know, made a mistake earlier in life that's not a major mistake. My suggestion would be, since I'm not aware that any member of the school committee is an attorney, is to actually include the language, legal language in the policy. That way, you're not leaving it up to the discretion of the school committee, which, I mean, I think when it comes to employment, that just needs to be legal. That, that's just the best way to protect the school committee. And that'd be my suggestion. I know, I'm almost done. You know, and finally, you know, I read it in the language on the policy for physical education that, and I'll just refer to it here briefly, but the, for after-school activities, that all the schools are encouraged to offer before and after-school activities. If there's no dollar amount attached to it, it doesn't have real meaning to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Legel.
Hello, Julie Connors Costello. Tonight, I come to you as an employee in the district. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to the people in the new positions of chair, vice chair, and clerk. Congratulations. Secondly, Mr. Oliver, you talk about the creation of a restroom that is conducive. We don't have one on my floor at Winmen. There are probably 25 women and three men, and we have one toilet for adults to use. So we've had to get creative or use the, the kids' bathroom. So I understand it was, you know, to become ADA compliant and everything else, but there is one toilet for 25-plus women on one floor. But my reason tonight is just to say that at Winmen, we need help. Winmen is a bustling place right now. We have lots of concerns. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the faculty at this particular meeting, but we're lacking in some areas of support. Most recently is the position of a school resource officer. Winmen's been without since, I believe it was Christmas 2022. Once in a while, we'll get the school resource officer from Toolgate, or maybe we'll get somebody from Winmen, but we need a school resource officer. I have concerns about the lack of department heads at the middle school level. Thank you, Mr. Galligan, which I can certainly speak to at the next meeting with my time shortage. I'd also love to see a team come back to Winmen. We are operating with two 7th grade, two 8th grade, and three 6th grade teams. One of our 7th grade teams has 103 students, or 102 students, and the other team has 134. That's coming up to me next year, and it is, it is hard to do with all of those kids, you know, five periods a day. So thank you for your attention.
Very much. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Hertel. I am a special education teacher at Winmen. First of all, I'd like to express my excitement at the two positions and teaching assistants, you know, full-time positions and teaching assistants that have been added to the elementary level. The younger we start those services, we're just going to see that pay off as they move along. But I'm also here to petition that we need help at the secondary level as well. I know that the, the school department and others have been petitioned for several years about the need for additional teams for the reasons that Mrs. Connors Costello was saying, and also that we have no room for movement. Our classes are already packed. When numbers are determined, you can't max out your classrooms for students, especially students with disabilities, because we can't balance the budget on the backs of some of our most vulnerable students. We need to make sure that we have room for movement. I teach IA. I am over in one class, and I have a student who needs additional supports. Yet, there are students, not, and that's just me, not anybody else, there are students who have not made educational growth on iReady data in years, and we have nowhere to put them. It shouldn't be all or nothing. It shouldn't be a full IASE placement if you only need it for English and math, and we can keep you in social studies and science, but there's no room for movement. So I don't know what else to do for students. I can't write an IEP based on what we have available, obviously, because that would be against the law. So I need to make sure that I'm here advocating for there to be movement on that continuum of services. Not everybody can be in the regular education classroom satisfactorily educated if they are not making growth. That is not okay for 8th graders who have not made growth in three years on either iReady, math or English, math or reading. To send them up to the high school ill-prepared, we need additional staffing in another team to be able to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Before we just get into future meetings, I want to thank Kevin Oliver and the team of Buildings and Operations personnel who did a great job on Sunday and Monday with getting our schools ready for opening up following Sunday's storm. So great job to you and the entire Buildings and Operations team. I'll be reaching out to my colleagues prior to week's end to discuss appointments to the subcommittees of Buildings, Finance, Policy, and Health and Wellness. So I will be reaching out to you all prior to Friday. Upcoming meetings include fiscal subcommittee meeting on January tenth, twenty twenty-four, at two thirty P.M., Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, at six P.M., Policy Subcommittee meeting, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, at four P.M., Work School Building Committee meeting, February seventh, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty A.M., Monthly School Committee meeting, the next one will be on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P.M. And last but not least, the Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, at six P.M. With there being no other business before this body, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.